Call the meeting to order. It's the meeting of November 17th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, the Chair to entertain a motion to approve the order of business.
So moved. I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. The motion carries. Next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Sir, second.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Mr. Decker, Mr. Steiner. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. Item A is the municipal prosecutor contract. And Mr. Coling will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the last commission meeting, city staff, Mr. Kessel and Chief Dossinger and I have met with each of the responding firms in order to further discuss the city's expectations regarding municipal prosecution. We have included a matrix attempting to compare and contrast the proposals. And it is enclosed with your commission packet. And I think I'll leave it to Mr. Kessel to provide a recommendation to you if he chooses to do so. I'd be happy to take any questions if you do have them.
Mr. Coling, do you still find that the contract financial difference is still roughly $250,000 versus $150,000?
Yes, Mr. President. Neither of the firms changed their baseline numbers for their compensation proposals in our meetings, so those numbers remain the same.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions?
Well, if you'd like, I can certainly make a few more comments. As it relates to the contract itself, we made a recommendation at the last city commission meeting to do a one-year contract with Ebelthoff Sichler. That was based upon a couple different things. First of all, we've made it known that it is staff desire anyways to transition to an in-house. At $250,000 a year, we thought we could provide that service in-house for a much less expense and provide a similar quality of service. So the thought process was to award a one-year contract, Ebelthoff Sichler, and then bring that in-house. We did have concerns from the McAuliffe Kellogg side because none of the three people that Attorney Coling mentioned, him, myself, or Dustin, or Chief Dossinger, excuse me, had been contacted by McAuliffe Kellogg. And we just weren't sure if they knew exactly what we were looking for. We are also concerned because their lead counsel had less than the required two-year minimum experience level that we had indicated that we desired in the RFP. And so it was really advantageous to meet with both firms. And at the conclusion of those meetings, the McAuliffe Kellogg firm has changed their lineup in terms of who their lead, not their lead counsel stayed the same, but their second chair did change. Although there may be some transition issues, we believe now that McAuliffe Kellogg would be the firm that we would make a recommendation to the city commission to provide a two-year contract at $150,000. We don't believe that we can provide in-house a significant difference in cost. And when the Ebelthoff Sichler firm took the contract originally, their lead Ms. Grant had a similar level of experience, about a year and a half to two years when she took this on and ably performed that contract for us. So we believe now with the lead counsel for McAuliffe Kellogg that they probably can ably perform as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there comments or questions?
Mr. Kessel, your assumption is that considering both firms, apples for apples, what we have gotten in the last couple of years with Ebelthoff Sichler will be the same service, identical to what we're going to get from you?
Well, Commissioner Steiner, no, I don't think it'll be identical. I think there'll be a learning curve, just the same, similar to the same learning curve that Ebelthoff Sichler had in the beginning. So no, I don't think that out of the gate McAuliffe Kellogg will go provide the same level of service that Ebelthoff Sichler did. But I think over the course of the contract time, that would be our expectation, is that yes, they would perform at the similar levels as Ebelthoff Sichler did.
Are you recommending a one-year term?
Two-year term. I think one of the most advantageous pieces of this RFP is the cost difference between the two firms. And they're suggesting a two-year contract as we did in the RFP, and I think we should take advantage of that.
Mr. Jackson, did you have a comment?
I was going to ask about the one-year, two-year. You know, the matrix that you've provided us is really helpful. That really, and it does show that, at least on paper, the services are going to be similar. We're very fortunate that we've got two quality firms. I think that if the dollars were close, I might have a tendency to stay with the firm that's been doing the work for us. But these aren't close. And I think the direction for us is pretty clear, in my mind.
I have a couple of questions regarding the RFP and how RFPs work with the city in general. When you receive an RFP that doesn't meet the minimum requirements, how do we as a city move forward with that? What are our parameters and how does that work?
Commissioner Altman, the document, the RFP document states that the city commission reserves the right to reject any proposals, to waive technicalities in the proposals, and to accept any proposal if it is believed to be in the best interests of the city. So you are, as a commission, entitled to accept what proposals you deem best, what you believe is in the best interest of the city.
Any other comments or questions? Would there be a motion regarding the prosecutor contract?
Mr. President, I'll move that we award a two-year contract to the McAuliffe Kellogg firm.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion. Hearing none, then we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Did you vote nay?
Nay.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries four to one. We will now move to item B. Well, before we move to item B, I think even though there is not a motion regarding how to transition, I think we should afford Mr. Kessel and Mr. Coling the opportunity to negotiate with both firms in terms of how to make a transition from the existing caseload to the new caseload. So, does anyone object to that? Because there's a certain amount of cases that are in process. And the options will be, of course, whether or not Ebelthoff Sichler takes the cases they've started and prosecutes them, or if those transition immediately over to McAuliffe Kellogg. And I think we should leave that to Mr. Coling and Mr. Kessel to work out an acceptable arrangement between both firms, if that's acceptable to the commission.
And there's a handful of cases that'll have some conflict.
Well, there's, and there's some that they'll have some conflicts with possibly.
There will be some conflicts. Mr. Altman, Mr. President, we have had some preliminary discussion with both firms about the transition process. And I think we may be able to manage that a little bit easier than we may have initially been thinking as staff. So I think we can work through that process with both firms and come to a reasonable resolution of it.
Is there anything else? Did I miss anything? Okay. All right. Well, then we'll move along to item B, which is a procurement ordinance. And this will be the second reading of this ordinance, and Mr. Coling will introduce that.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this ordinance makes some changes to the city's method of procuring supplies, materials, equipment, and contractual services. Our current ordinance requires the city to engage in a competitive bidding process for any purchases over $20,000. If approved, this ordinance would raise that bidding threshold to $100,000. The ordinance would also make some reporting requirements on department heads in the event that they make purchases in an amount less than $100,000. There are no changes to the ordinance from first reading, and city staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. If there's anyone in the, from the public that would like to comment regarding the proposed ordinance 1567, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment on 1567? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment? Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Not? Is there a motion regarding second reading and final passage of ordinance 1567?
Move to approve?
Sir, a second.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. We'll go to item C, and that's our human resource monthly report. And Mrs. Nomenek will give that.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. At the top of our list is police officers. We have two openings that we are in the background phase for right now, but we do have two more that we will be, actually be open today. So hopefully, we will get those filled soon. Those two that we just had open, but now we have two more. Firefighter, the four positions are for the new year that we were just given, those four positions for 2015. And we just closed the position on Friday. We're scoring those to determine who will get an interview. And we had a good number of applicants for that, so that was real nice to see. Scale attendant, we are going to open another position for that, or we did open, rather than a laborer position, we decided to open another scale attendant to help out with the scale at the sanitation department. We have been kind of struggling in sanitation department right now with positions. They have laborer positions, operator positions, and the scale attendant position open. We did just hire sanitation supervisor internally, which opened another position for us. So we have that supervisor position filled, which was really nice for them. Street operator, we, for a very short period of time, were fully staffed. We just lost two of our new operators, so we have that open again as well. We had two communication specialist positions open recently, and we were able to hire both of them, and they start tomorrow, actually. Water utility operator, we've been kind of struggling to fill that position. We have one position open, and it's been open for several months. We just have not been able to hire that one yet. Chief engineering technician is a new position for 2015. That position closes today, so we'll be taking a look at those applicants. Accounting manager closes today as well. Custodian, we had an open position for the library museum, which we were just able to We had some library assistants, part-time positions, that I believe we're fully staffed now in the library. Fleet shop technician, just opened, the rest of them are just newly open positions. So that's the fleet shop technician position that we just got approval for, for the job description. Facility operators, we have two new positions for 2015. Those were just opened. And the GIS technician and the engineering project manager, we're hoping to have those open tomorrow. Any questions on any of those?
On the accounting manager, you said that closes today. Do you know if you've had many applicants for that position?
We have not had many. I would say maybe four.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Kessel?
If I could, just to even qualify further what Ms. Nomenek just mentioned of the four that did apply for the accounting manager position, not all of them are qualified or meet our minimum qualifications.
Any other comments or questions? Sounds like it's still really a very tight labor market from the city's perspective.
It really is. The firefighter is the position right now that we're getting, you know, we did get quite a few applications for, trying to get those scored to make sure they meet the minimum qualifications too. And I'm not done with that. They have until today to get that to me, but that's about the only one that I've seen any number of applicants come in.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, then, item D is to hear from the Dickinson Museum Center, and Director Ingram will make Well, you know, you could sit closer to the front.
But that would be scary. And all the cool people sit in the back. I'm here tonight just to give you the brief update on where we are with the museum center. We've had a very good year. We're up over 1,200 people over last year, which I think is a new record for us in terms of an incremental boost in visitation. We've, I think, had some very interesting and exciting exhibits this year. The last time I was here, I told you about our obsolete exhibit. Tonight, I'm here to tell you that we're liquidating one of our exhibits. Our canvas print exhibit of digital images from our archives are all going to be sold at auction on December 5th. So mark your calendars, and you can all come and buy things for the holidays, or to decorate, or just to support the museum. I think this is a great opportunity for us to bring people into the museum again, have a little wine, have a little auction, make a little money, and have a good time. And everybody can leave with their very own piece of Dickinson history.
What date is that auction again?
That is, that is December 5th, beginning at 5:30 PM. At 188 Museum Drive East. That's the building right next to the dinosaur museum. So we're very excited about that. And the other reason I'm here tonight is that we have been reviewing proposals for interpretive planning as part of our plan for this year. We were planning to hire a consultant to help us with our interpretive planning at the museum center. What interpretive plans do for museums is to define for us who we're serving now, who we want to serve, what stories we tell, and how we tell those stories, and what venues we use to do that. So it basically puts us together, you know, on a track to creating a visitor experience that is interesting for visitors who are coming today, and for the people we're trying to get who've never been to the museum. We advertised for planning services. We received six proposals. And the committee made up of members of the Yocum Museum Board, and the Stark County Museum Board, and the city staff have settled on one proposal from Economic Stewardship, which is a firm from Sturgeon Bay, Wisconsin. Some of you may have met Elaine Carmichael, who's the principal of that firm. She's also been working on the interpretive team for the Theodore Roosevelt Center. So she may have interviewed some of you or been part of that, if you were part of their planning process. What she brings to this is years of experience in working with nonprofits, and museums, and heritage areas. And I think what we have is an engaging proposal that will help us move further down the road to making the Dickinson Museum Center a must-see for everybody who comes here. I think that's particularly important as we look toward the future and the development of the TR Center. We're soon going to be faced with the idea that we'll have 95,000 new visitors to Dickinson. And in addition to visiting the TR Center, they are also going to want to learn a little bit more about Dickinson. And I think that's the role that we'll play in terms of creating a, another element of the sort of high amenity city that Dickinson, I think, is beginning to become. So with that, I would ask for you to consider the, our contracting with Economic Stewardship for $25,000. We have received a $10,000 grant from the State Historical Society to help underwrite the cost of the interpretive plan. And so I would, it's a budgeted expense, and I would take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Are there any comments or questions for our museum director? And, Mr. Kessel, can you confirm that this is a budgeted amount?
This is in the budget. He's not lying to you.
I didn't.
This time.
I didn't say that.
Although it's a very good question to ask when Mr. Ingram's at the table.
I didn't think he was lying. I was just concerned he could have been mistaken. Okay, well, if there are no comments or questions, would there be a motion regarding the request to approve their consultant?
Motion to approve.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote then. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. And remember, December 5th, there'll be almost 100 lots.
About that. That was the question I was going to ask.
Yes.
100 items in the auction.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a further question. Are they viewable on your website, DickinsonMuseumCenter.com?
They will be, they will be by Wednesday afternoon. Otherwise, you can just do it the old-fashioned way and stop at the museum. They're all up in the gallery. So feel free to stop by and take a look, preview. And I look forward to seeing you all there. Bring your checkbooks. Although we can now take your cards, too. We have a little reader thing, so.
All right. Thank you.
Dan, is this the order of the entertainment?
No, I think it goes drink-eat-bid.
Just as long as drink is before bid.
Exactly. And assuming that we're granted our license, so.
All right. Okay, we'll move down to engineering then. And Assistant City Engineer Marshick has a couple of items to present to us. So first is a change order on 40th Street East, and the second would be a change order on 10th Avenue West. And we'll let you go ahead and present those.
Thank you. Good evening, President Johnson and Commissioners. Our first item is the change order for 40th Street East. This project was originally $828,047. The change, or the project was originally that amount. The change order is for $98,583. This would bring us a new contract amount of $926,630. This change order also adds five days of a construction time with a substantial completion date of December 20th. We're currently working on extending sewer and water services, weather permitting. And we've ran into some difficult soils and some things, and that's what's brought about this change order. The city staff recommends approval. Do you have any questions for me on this item?
What do you mean by difficult soils?
The soils were, I'm trying to think how to explain it. In a warm weather, they're pretty wet. So if the temps were warmer, it would be easier to get those soils to dry out. And when we excavate, put pipe in the ground, and put the material back, we would get some good compaction. But because of the cold weather and the type of soils with the moisture, it's making it hard to get that accomplished. So we're adding, having to get different material, add some fabric, and that's what's...
Okay, so these would have been conditions that wouldn't have been anticipated by any of the bidding contractors at bid time? Other comments, questions?
Mr. President, I would just note that this portion of the project is subject to a special improvement district, and these costs potentially could be included within that special assessment if the commission so chose in the future.
Okay. And that's not a decision we're being asked to make this evening?
No, those numbers will all come back to you at a later date once the project is completed.
Mr. Decker?
I have a question. Have we not run into this soil type anywhere in the amount of construction we've done in Dickinson?
I think when the study was performed, we were anticipating doing this construction earlier in the season. And for earlier in the season, the soils would have worked better, just with the moisture content.
We knew they were there.
So we knew they were there, but we didn't know the problem was going to be what it was with the weather.
If I could, I think, I've been trying to follow this with Mr. Kubis the last few weeks, and I think really that's the biggest issue is the timing. Had we bid this last spring, like was originally intended, this may not have been the problem that it is. It's unfortunate, but it's as much a timing thing as anything else.
So we can anticipate this on future projects since we know that if we're going to develop an area and it's going to go run into the winter, so from now on, will we have future bids?
Well, but without the Arctic vortex, our temperatures would have been modulated a little bit more. It might not have been so bad. I don't know.
Well, and I'm hoping going forward that we'll be able to get things in line, and we won't have to be doing this at this time of year.
I just know we have another big project coming up that's kind of wet.
If I could, I just wanted to remind the commission of the location of the project on 40th Street there. This project is, has a lot of stormwater issues. It is the low spot and drains, almost all of this acreage here drains to that spot. And so it is wet for a variety of reasons, which include a lot of topography issues that we may not see the similar topography issues on future projects.
And because of all the issues associated with it, we bid it very late, knowing that it was a late bid. But if we don't get this in, the alternative then was for the developer out there to tie in temporary lines.
Correct.
Other comments, questions? Would there be a motion then regarding this change order number one?
Make a motion to approve?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there other discussion on this issue? Hearing none will vote. Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Will you continue?
The next item we have is an amendment to a task order number two with KLJ for 10th Avenue West. This task order relates to additional time and resources required of KLJ to get this project completed. As of today, there's 23 days over, the contractors, 23 days over on the project, and we're still not completed. The original contract amount with KLJ was $608,290. This amendment amount would be $72,338. That's also a per-hour amount, so if we don't, if they don't need all that time, we wouldn't get to that dollar amount. But the adjusted total amount would be $680,628. Do you have any questions about this item?
Do you know when you're going to be complete on this project?
With the items that we have left, there's no lighting there, and we still have, we're still waiting on a feed point. So depending when we can get that feed point, it might be something that we have to wait on until spring for them to complete.
Does the lack of completion cause us any issues here in the city?
You know, with the lack of lighting, you know, I would like them to get the lights in up there, especially by the school, but considering that area is lacking streetlights and other areas, I don't know that it's as big a deal to wait till spring. I think we would get better construction.
If we waited.
If we wait.
The street is being fully utilized, correct?
Correct.
Other comments?
I'd also like to add that the staff recommends approval.
Okay. So would there be a motion then regarding this change order?
Mr. President, move, we approve change order.
Sir, a second.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay. There's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. The chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an item C, and that's an oil well application, and Mr. Kubes will introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commission, in your packets is an application from Armstrong Corporation to drill a well, drill an oil well southwest of Dickinson. We had met with the applicant. They're also in the crowd this evening. Two weeks ago, we met with them to discuss this application. They do have a completed and approved permit to drill from state of North Dakota. I'll just highlight some of the issues that we had talked through with the applicant, and they were agreeable to make these accommodations during their process. Talked about the access to and from their site, which they've worked through with Stark County. So their access is acceptable. We've asked them to install a mud tracking pad, similar to ones that we have around construction sites in town, as this location will be right off the pavement. They will be installing a fence and security cameras in place. I think the Armstrong Corporation has had a history of safe well sites, clean well sites, and we expect this to be no different. We've asked them to take a look at where they position their flare pit. Their well outside of the minimum 500-foot spacing between a well location and a residence. I think they're closer to a quarter mile, but they said they would take a look at that flare pit location. So those were the comments that the Energy Committee and staff had discussed with the applicant. City staff recommends approval of this application to drill an oil well. One thing I would note, though, and this has been in our city application to drill an oil well for many, many years, is that a requirement of the applicant before they can apply to the city is that they have an approved state permit. And this makes it difficult from a timing standpoint for the city to request and have some changes implemented. They go through a rigorous process that takes them probably the better part of a year to get a well permitted through the state. I think the first correspondence was from February of this year. At that point, they have an approved well, and then they come to the city. Not sure on the history of why the city had required that in the past. My suspicion is that back in the day, we had been inundated with applications to drill oil wells. So instead of getting a lot of speculative applications to drill wells, we just said, no, you need to go through the state process and have that permitted. Well, now this is a pretty systematic process of drilling wells. So what we're going to in the future ask applicants is to come forward before they submit to the state or during that process. So if there's some siting location changes that the city would request, they can get that implemented before they make their final application to the state. But that'll be on future wells moving forward. This well, we'd work through some minor details with them, and like I'd mentioned before, recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kubes. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Kubes?
I have one at least. Do you guys get to look at pipeline locations on these wells?
Well, no. Right now, what we see is the well application packet, essentially the approved permit from the state. That doesn't necessarily show off-site piping. I think the applicant did mention that their intention, if this becomes a producing well, would most likely be tied into a pipeline network that's out there. But right now, we're really looking at the 400 by 400 square of land that will be the pad.
I hope our process, if it needs to be expanded, can look at pipeline locations. You know, we've struggled with subdivisions, how they crisscross so many of our subdivisions the last couple, three years here. And if nothing else, to at least get it squared up, get it the right distance from, it looks like you're on a section-lined road there. I'm sure that the Armstrong Corporation would cooperate in doing that. Anything that we can try to anticipate, may never be developed out there, but at least we should try to get this stuff in so it's easier to design around and all of that. Makes sense?
It does, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Other comments?
I have a question, Mr. President. That road has just been fixed this summer. And I know they, reading through this, they contributed to like upgrading it because they're going to be using it. Now, after the process of drilling this well and it, how about if it gets torn out? Is there any agreement?
We don't have an agreement. The access road that we discussed with them really involves city roads. That road that was recently paved or overlaid this summer is actually a Stark County road. I know the applicant has obviously been in touch with Stark County as they've worked out a financial arrangement on its improvements. I've talked to Stark County Road Department as well on that. When they hit city limits, the route that they'll be on is our designated truck route. So from the city road network, I think we're in pretty good shape. We asked that they coordinate with Stark County, which they've done. Whether there's an agreement for future maintenance down the road, city wouldn't be a part of that.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Okay, you've had an opportunity to review the materials. You've heard Mr. Kubes' introduction recommendation. Is there a motion regarding this item?
Move, we approve the application.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Any reports you'd like to give, Mr. Kubes?
Yes, Mr. President. One specific thing, we've been talking as staff internally for probably a couple months now about a winter shutdown date. Last year, we had targeted the Monday of Thanksgiving week, which worked out pretty well. Coincided with our first cold snap of the year in 2013. We were targeting Thanksgiving again this year with the onset of this extended cold snap. Last week, we had made the decision to implement our winter shutdown. We were giving contractors a week. This went on our website last Wednesday. Most contractors and developers have been made aware of this already. But if I could, I would read the winter shutdown notice in city right-of-way. It reads, "With the onset of cold weather, Dickinson wants to alert contractors of the upcoming winter shutdown. November 19th, 2014 will be the last day of allowable construction in city right-of-way. The city reserves the right to change the date if it is in the best interest of the community. Utility work for active building permits will be considered on a case-by-case basis. Please coordinate with city staff if there's an emergency that requires work within the right-of-way after November 19th." So we have had a couple requests late last week and today to do some work within the right-of-way. Like it said in the notice, we'll be assessing those on a case-by-case basis. If, I guess, if we're not touching pavement, we're not tearing out concrete and asphalt at this point, we would consider those more strongly than any work that would need to go into the street at this point. Of course, we do have some city projects that are ongoing servicing existing building permits, so we're looking at those again a little bit differently. But the intent is to really minimize the work that we just can't get compaction on. So we've implemented this date. Haven't heard any strong negative feedback to it, and I think it's a good policy that the city's done now for. I think this will be the third winter.
Any reaction from Commissioners? Okay.
Other than that, project updates, we do have a few projects ongoing right now. We're working with all those contractors to either continue work or to button up operations this week so we can get some traffic control devices removed. People have been out on the west business loop. Might note, there's still a lot of barrels and cones out on the roadway. We get into this time of year with the chance of snow, could happen at any time. Want to get those things removed so our snow plows don't have to remove them for the contractor. But other than that, I think it was a busy, busy construction season that we're winding down maybe a couple weeks sooner than some of us would have hoped. But hopefully, we'll have a good winter and we'll get an early start on it in the spring.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for city engineer? All right, we'll go to Public Works. And Mr. Zuroff is absent, so Mr. Coulter, you're going to give an update?
Mr. President, Commissioners, Mr. Kertan, can you turn the key for the screen? It's everybody's favorite time of year, snow removal and snow routes. And as everybody well knows, we've had a lot of major changes throughout the city. Currently, you're looking at the 2013 snow map, 2013, 2014. If you note, the east and west loops are green. Those were state-maintained. You can see the red routes, which are level-one roads. Those have changed as well. And the blue routes are the level-two, which is mainly schools and business districts. Currently, this year, going into the 2015 season... Can you bring up the other map, please? And zoom out. And we need to click all the boxes on the left-hand side. Oh, nope. Not the right one. They should say level-one, level-two. If we go back to the old map. And zoom that out. A little more. And one more. This map's a little bit too small. However, for 2015, our level-one routes are now the east and west business loop, Villard. Our truck route, which is Sixth Avenue East, runs down to H Street Southeast, across to H Street Southwest, up States Avenue to the west loop and out. And if you continue along the west loop, the new interim bypass is in, it is open, and is being heavily used. That goes all the way around back to Highway 22, which added additional lane miles. Level-one continues south on 22 from that interim truck bypass to the current location on that map. Our hospital zone has also moved and has grown. The new hospital is due to open December 8th. That's when they plan on transferring patients, and we are currently working with Stark County and the hospital to accommodate that transition. On that map, Fairway and Ninth Street East runs all the way through from the west loop over to 18th Street, back to the east loop. That is now an emergency route. Fourteenth Street, north of the interstate, is now an emergency route. 12th Street West and 12th Street East over to and along Museum, over to 10th Avenue East is a level-one route. 10th Avenue East from Villard up to 21st and west out to States right now is currently a level-one route. The level-ones were all upgraded and laid out according to the needs of our emergency services, the best way to get them east and west, north and south throughout the town in the quickest amount of time. Level-two routes are mainly the schools. There have been some changes to those because Dickinson School District has added busing service. We didn't have to worry about that in the past, but since that is a new addition, we're going to start to include the bus routes through our level-two. The downtown business section and part of West Ridge is on the level-two route. But we have substantially grown just in the last year in the amount of roads and developments that have opened up. This year, 2014, 2015, our state-maintained roadways, the areas that are in green are no longer green. They are maintained by city personnel and city equipment. There are no longer any roadways within our city limits that are maintained by any state personnel. Also, we only have one roadway left that is shared. That would be considered a level-two roadway. It's 21st Street from States Avenue over into the West Ridge subdivision. Half of that road is maintained by the county, half of it is maintained by us. We kind of share double duty on that road. Everything else within the city limits is maintained by city personnel. There are no longer any other shared roads with any other entities. Currently, our staffing levels, when we were at full staff, including myself, we had 10 personnel. We're down to nine right now. Out of the nine, five of us have snow removal experience. The other four are brand-new operators, and they just got introduced to their first storm this year. So it's been fun. Our current snow removal equipment is three graders, three loader plows, two sanders, and one 1,000-gallon brine truck, and a blower-mounted loader, blower that is mounted to the lower for removal of snow. We have two tandem axle plows, DOT-style plows that have right-hand wings, underbodies, and front plows, as well as a multi-use sander box on the back that we should be expecting delivery on sometime in mid-January to late January. The reason those are so important to us right now is because as we expand, our roadways are getting larger, we're getting more length, and now we're getting boulevard sidewalks. So we don't have So we don't have to blow as much snow or haul as much snow. Those tandem axle plows will be able to take on the majority of our level-one routes, which will free up additional personnel to jump on our level-two routes a lot sooner. Currently, on our level-one routes, I have to break off two graders and two plows and a sander truck, which is over, well over half our personnel, just to maintain that within twenty-four hours, which we're required to do by law. That does not make some people happy. Unfortunately, Dickinson's not as small as it used to be. At the rate that, at the rate that we are growing, it's hard to play catch-up, even with the equipment order. You gentlemen did approve the two tandem axle trucks earlier this year. We did get them ordered. Unfortunately, three-quarters of the states in our area are all redoing their fleets right now. So we were last in line when we placed our order. That's why it's gonna take us till, till January to get those trucks, possibly February. Are there any questions?
Any comments or questions?
You, you may have said it, and I didn't hear, but Empire Road west of States Avenue.
That is considered a level-one route. That's a, a signed route to the new hospital.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I just had a quick question. Mr. Coulter, I- ninety-four, you showed it in green. Are, is DOT still plowing that, or is that gonna be the city?
DOT handles the interstate. Everything else is ours.
Other comments, questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Go to community development, Mr. Kertan?
Mr. President, commissioners, the only item I have tonight is the building permit report for the month ending of October. You will notice the, the progression of reductions that we've had from last year. We are six percent reduction on the total number of single-family units from two-hundred-and-seventy-three at this time last year to two-hundred-and-fifty-seven. The total permits issued, we have a sixteen percent reduction from last year from three-hundred-and-fifty-three to two-ninety-six. And total number of housing units, this would include multifamily apartments and then also single-family, we're at a forty-one percent reduction from this time last year at seven-twenty-seven to four-thirty-one. Our revenues or new permit values are, is a thirty-five percent reduction from two-hundred-and-ninety-one million to a hundred-and-ninety million. And lastly, in the bottom, just to highlight, our fees remitted to the city, that is a more positive note. We're at essentially the same as we were last year, even though we've had a reduction in the total number of building permits issued. We're very close to last year from one-point-four million to one-point-three. And with that, I can answer any questions you do have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Kertan? All right, thank you. Are there any issues by city commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Mr. Ortiz?
Mr. President, commissioners, good evening. My name is Ricardo Ortiz. I work here together with Father Kidd's Trifle with the Hispanic population here in, in Dickinson. And when we wanted to come here, I met with mayor last couple of weeks, of weeks, all just to, yeah, extend that, you know, and to manifest that we are here, that we are really thankful to you, that the city of Dickinson, the North Dakota state, is welcoming us. So yes, we want to tell you what, that we come here to work, that we come, that we are really happy working, and we wanna be cooperative with the, with the city, you know, and with all the different people here in town. In fact, we're gonna have a big event on December the eleventh. I do have a poster here. Well, I, I work at the Catholic Church there with Father Kidd, so we're gonna celebrate our Lady of Guadalupe mass, you know. And so, but this is an event that we wanna invite the whole community of Dickinson, every, everyone to come and join us where we can share, so we can be more united. We have an event in August, we had one at the rec center, maybe some of you were aware. We have a big gathering, it's called a big family fiesta, you know, where we try to, to gather everything, so we have a pretty good crowded Hispanic and the different Anglo and different communities. So that's, that was, I think, my, what I wanted to address today to, to you commissioners and Mr. President. So that we are here, we are really thankful, and we wanna, I keep working and keep contributing to the community or to the, to the city. Okay? And I have one, if you wanna see it, I can hand it over to you.
Sure. And what, what time does, this event begins on December eleventh?
Well, this event begins at seven P.M.
Seven P.M., okay.
We're gonna be joined by the, by the Bishop of the Diocese of Bismarck. He's coming, and then different invited priests, and then there is a group that is coming from Mexico to play live, you know, for, for the mass, and then after that is the custom for the people, you know, to stay until late at night, until midnight or one. So, so they, they offer to come and play for us, you know, so we can share a little bit of our Hispanic heritage to all of you. And so, thank you for giving us this opportunity, and so, and I work together, you know, with Father Kidd.
And I'm just here to express my support for Ricardo, for our Latino community, and for all the communities that are joining us, Mr. President, commissioners. We, as, as we all know, Dickinson began with a multi-ethnic community. Two of our parishes were founded as ethnic parishes, and we began with a, with a, a slogan or a, a, a title, the Queen City, so that all would know that there was a queen to welcome and to support and to help those who are coming. And so, I'm grateful for what we, has been, has happened for our Latino community, not only in the Catholic churches but throughout the city, and also for all the other communities, because as you certainly know, there's lots of folks. And so, thank you for hearing Ricardo today and for, for all that you're doing.
And this, this will be at Saint Joseph's Catholic Church at seven P.M. There'll be a mass.
That's correct. And the mass will be in English. Bishop doesn't speak Spanish, so the mass will be in English for those who are afraid. But for those who, who want to hear Spanish, the music will be in Spanish, and there'll be lots of other things in Spanish, including some excellent Mexican food, I am sure.
And will the whole event be held at the church then?
It will be. I think, you know, I think this year, we're probably just kind of starting and seeing, you know, what, what the, the community brings together, but, yeah.
And this is a, a special day in the life of the Hispanic community.
Certainly, yes. So it celebrates the feast of Our Lady of Guadalupe. It was an appearance of, of Mary in the United States. She's also called the patroness of the Americas. Guadalupe is in Mexico, and so that's why our Mexican folks are especially interested in that. And, and so, it's a celebration of, of that feast. Actually, there was a, it was a huge evangelization for our, our continent and for our, our western hemisphere. And so, that's, that's what they celebrate. It's a beautiful, and the image itself is, is a beautiful image that, that shows us Mary pregnant with the child, Jesus, coming to us. She brings us, the child, Jesus, brings the child, Jesus, to the Americas. So that's kind of part of the history. I, I'd love to tell you the whole story if you wanna hear it. But I'm sure Ricardo could tell it better than I could.
Well, I, I think we've got the idea.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
It's public comment, it's not a sermon. Well, very good. Any comments or questions here by our commission? So for the, the general public, if they would like to join the Hispanic community in celebrating this special day, they can do so at December eleventh at seven P.M. at Saint Joseph's Church, and it'll be led by the bishop.
That's right, certainly. All are welcome.
All right.
Very good.
Very good. Anything else, Mr. Ortiz?
No, just to thank you for giving me, for giving us the opportunity. And once again, to extend that we're here to work hard, you know, to contribute with the economy or to the city, you know. So thank you very much to everyone.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Is no one else from the public that wishes to comment? So the chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay, we're adjourned.